Everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting? Any questions, additions, corrections, or not? If not, we'll take a motion to approve. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda, any additions to that?
Well, Bill will give it, but what we run into on Front Street down here, that water break.
Okay, I have that review.
You want me to add that to the agenda?
No, Bill has it listed. It's really good there. Anything else? If not, we'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Visitors, Renee's not coming in?
I would assume they're not here. They were coming to address between the park. They bought that house down there, down where it goes like this, where the water goes. When we had all them torrential rains here this summer, the water went all the way up to the house. They want to know who's responsible for keeping that water from the house. They were supposed to be here to talk to you, so I guess they'll maybe try next month.
I don't know how long your city is going to be able to resist their hose.
I think it actually is an alley. You have that waterway. And it's still filled in with dirt. My opinion, guys, we should actually start on the north side of that. That'd be Maple Street. You know, right at the south end of the big park. And tear that roadway out and just cement an apron through there. And then go like about 150 feet south with a waterway, a concrete waterway. Because what happens is all the dirt and debris is coming and it deposits in all that grass and it just slowly builds up and then it doesn't get to the culvert. Dwayne Nelson, I think, went in there with a tractor and pushed some out, so it's better than what it was. And that was after the rains.
Okay.
But I don't know what it would cost. I know earlier, that was two years ago, Moore Engineering, you know, did a study, but I think they kind of went overboard on something like that.
Yeah, that was a hundred year rain study.
Yeah.
So is there anything we should clean out this year for spring? Not that it backs up in floods, do you think, or try and get in there with something?
You know, if it's dry, then maybe we should try. You know, I'll take the skidder and just cut it wider, you know, make it like four feet wide.
We've tried shoveling down numerous times and it's just, just keeps washing back down in there.
We gotta be careful because there's that house, whatever their name is, that wire. Their conductors come across that ditch and then turn and go to the pole. And I think we're pretty close to the wires already. And there's telephone in there too, crossing that drainage ditch. So the guy, if you got a little cage, just be very careful.
So they're lower than used to be already then, I assume?
Yeah, it was worse. I was in there once and cleaned it out.
But I mean, like years ago, obviously, they would have had to bury it so deep now, lower than...
Yeah.
Forty years ago when they put it in? I just, if the city's gonna be responsible for it, then it'd come and unball it.
Yeah, it's...
As far as our fault or...
That's why I thought maybe like concrete, you got to pour it like 150 feet of just four feet wide or five feet wide, so you go in with a machine right onto that concrete and push dirt, whatever deposits.
The culvert, be cheaper than that?
I don't know how you get it to grade, you know? Because you don't dare go lower than that.
Right, that one on the other end?
That Dennis Meyer put in. And that road is part of the problem, you know, it's so...
Yeah, that road is so compromised right now that anything we put in there gets washed out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should, I guess, go locate, see what we can do this fall yet then?
That's what I would say.
Okay. Yeah, better do something before it freezes then, because that backs up right, okay? All right, well, we'll start there, I guess, and see what we can do. Maybe next year we get some estimates for trying to make it, okay? All right, anything else on that, guys? Well, she, I assume she's contacting you?
Yes, she called and wanted to know who she had to contact and find out who's responsible for all that comes to her house and it started, you know, defrayed it's come to her house. As it went right up to the house this year with all the rains. I thought her and her husband were gonna be here, but, because I told him to be here, talk to you guys.
Okay, well, if they show up, we can just address it, I guess, so they know we're working on something to try and help them out. All right, we'll go into city maintenance then.
I guess the whole water break thing down here, the fuel's got fixed. Replaced the gate valve today. It is plastic on both sides of the gate valve, so somewhere on that east side of that gate valve there, push through that duct tile here. So... That's gonna have to get redone, it's not in good shape at all. Just show granted a little bit today and Lauren knows about it.
Did you bring that pipe in there?
Yeah, it's up there in the shop.
How long those stretches at then? That should be replaced.
We have to go to that... So I would say 350 feet.
Did you get a chance to talk to Moore?
Yeah, I called him this morning and right now, the regulations where they have them, that four inch is not up to code anymore. It has to be a minimum of six inches, six inch pipe. So that's something we have to think about if we want to replace that pipe down there with six inch or they said we might be able to have somebody come in and four line, a one inch line, maybe it's only doing two services there. One thing is we have to get rid of that hydrant. I don't think we should get rid of the hydrant down there. Because that's the only one down there that works. He did say that there is some CDVG money out there next year, I think? Or we have to apply for it this year for next year?
So I talked to Brian Day today a couple of times and he's... There was some miscommunication, we'll just leave it at that. He was thinking we had more time, but now with this emergency, he's getting on it. He's gonna be sending a bunch of stuff to the auditor, who's gonna go around and basically help him out because they're short-staffed right now, to get the ball rolling for this. But there is some emergency money, but we, it sounds like we just fixed the leaks right now. So it wouldn't be till next spring no matter what, whether it's that government emergency funding or CDVG money. So we're trying to get that study done so we can still get on with that government funding, which would hopefully be right away in the spring, is what he had told me. Couple of different options, and if you guys got any questions tonight, Tom said he would be around to answer any questions, we could just give him a call. But it kind of sounds like until we get this study completed, there would be, I don't know, see what happens with their income study, we might not even be approved for anything moving forward, which I hope not, but I guess other than that, there's not much we can do.
There is the storms that were down there too, that is all plugged up. You know, we might as well replace that right away too, getting rid of it up the street.
What do we have with that income study?
Like I said, it was under the understanding we had till June, so we're going on the back burner as of yesterday, and now we're on the front burner, we'll put it that way with the emergency.
I have to send out letters to every resident. He sent me an email, the letter that he was supposed to be sending out. So I told him I'd help him, he's sending them to me. I'm addressing them all, sending them all, mail them out, and then I'll keep track of... I'm gonna have him send them back here to the city so I can keep track of all the residents who filled theirs out, and the ones that didn't, then I need to go and walk to their house with another one and see if they would fill it out, of course. See, that's what he doesn't have time for. But he did say he was going to go ahead and call the USDA and Department of Commerce and let him know that we're putting this as emergency and going, doing the work.
Yeah, I just hope we don't have too many more this winter. Before that doesn't start.
Yeah, so regardless, we're gonna have to wind this along for the winter, yes. Pretty much. Other than that, I guess there's not much. If you guys got any more questions, I guess you should call Tom, but let him know, fill you in on anything.
Like what's a project like that, like split all costs?
I wouldn't have a clue.
Yeah, I don't.
Because you're gonna have engineers and everything involved, yes, I don't know. Yeah, I don't, is it gonna make the winter, do you think, or what are we...
You know, I don't...
Gamble on it, because we can't fix it already now.
That's what I would think, I don't know how far that, you know, I am suspecting it would be all the way to the hydrant.
Yeah, I don't think so too.
And I don't know, I wonder what the COA heading north looks like, or what they put in.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess the guy could look at what the meter's hooked up to, but sometimes that's not accurate either. They could ran two inch, you know, poly or whatever, and then came off the line with copper. I don't know what poly or...
Yeah, that'd be my suspicion, because that was put in in 76, I think, or 77, when the COA was built. So I would think they would have ran, you know, poly was pretty popular then already.
So, City Lab, Bill from Moore or Ferguson Water. Map showed six inch, so I got everything to do six inch and dug it open here, so this is down there. So they'll get a bill from Ferguson, because they drilled out of Bismarck twice to deliver the parts for us, so they can get it fixed.
That was supposed to show PVC under it, isn't it?
Yeah. I don't pay more on that, or...
Hope to hell it lasts till June, I guess, put it that way.
Yeah.
Because it's only here with getting going, it's gonna be a few months here. And it'd be on a project like that, like bring everybody in that needs to be involved with it, it's gonna be another few months.
And that could be, you know, how deep was that line above, do you figure?
About 10 feet.
10?
All right, anything else you got, Bill?
New shingle pit got dug out there, I don't know if it's done. Oh, let me go back to DeWolfs. I think it'd be pretty nice for the city to get DeWolfs, like some sort of gift certificate to the Freeze or the coffee shop, because they're always going to the coffee shop or the Freeze when it's open, because they drop everything in there, they're here the next day. And they moved a lot of stuff around for us this year to get between this and that water break that we have over at Salsa's, that sewer that was plugged up. I don't know, that's partially our fault, but still, they still have to move stuff around to get us done.
We don't want to wreck that, I know that, so we don't want to mess with that for, in the future, I mean, to keep helping us out, and I know this isn't gonna be the only year that it happens. I don't know, whatever you guys think.
We want to just get them like a hundred dollar gift certificate, and it's usually four people, one, Travis, and the two ladies.
I'll take the motion, hundred dollar gift certificate.
Is this gonna be for to the Freeze or to the coffee place, or should we make a gift certificate that they can spend it either or from the city, and then they'll send us the bill and pay it?
Why don't we do it that way, in your sense?
I'll make up a gift certificate that says a hundred dollars for the city, and I'll let both of them know if somebody comes in for that, they'll write it down and send them the bill for it.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, next to Tom's house, that grab, they cut the front part, but the back is...
I cut mine and it's about, you know, it's like mine's here and there's a wall like this.
Nobody lives there, so we're gonna have to send them a letter or something.
What's the status, you know, some guys were moving in or some people were moving in there about a week ago or two?
No, I haven't seen anybody moving in there, no, that gal moved out.
Yeah.
But since then, I haven't seen anybody moving in or anything. Months ago, some people were gonna move into that house, but because that woman was in there, they put all this stuff in the White House and put a padlock on the door. Now supposedly they were buying that house next to me, but I haven't seen them in months, no.
Oh, I thought they were here moving in.
I don't know if they're still up in Jamestown or if they went back to California, I don't know what's going on. I hope nobody moves in. I hope, I hope, pardon me, four times, I have two messages and they've never called me back. All those bags of human feces and urine are still piled up in the garage, it stinks so bad. I don't know if it would help if someone from the city would call, or we have a different person?
Who do you think they'll call?
Well, that was, that's on our, that's on our agenda, what are Dell did before, was the job he did for like that? Something like...
That was to deem houses.
Building inspector.
Yeah, building inspector, thank you. Does he still... The whole reason it was brought up, we were talking about that house, and Sherry had mentioned what you were going through over there.
And the steps you were cutting.
He was in that Dean Ramble's house and helped us out, is he still, as far as I know, for the city?
Actually, he should be in the minutes, where he, we...
If he doesn't want to do it, we should appoint someone else and that we can...
Put him in as building inspector, that, that would have been what?
Would that have fallen or something like that?
It should be in the minutes someplace, I know.
I would think so, if it's deemed ineligible, that's what you, we have to appoint him for, for up there at Ramble's on the corner up here, and that kept the process going, so maybe if we have, if he doesn't want to do anywhere, we should appoint someone though, so that we can have someone like that help. Or maybe someone from the city, I don't know who you called and what number, but I guess...
Just the state health department. And I didn't tell them anything other than I gave my name, my number, and asked them to please call me back. And they've called me back. But I know when Ardell was still working for the city, Hank's kids were living in that White House down by me, and Hank took all his garbage, because we were told by the city council, don't pick the garbage up, because they weren't paying the bill.
Yep.
So Hank took all his down to his son's house and dumped up about 40 bags of garbage off down there, and they didn't pay their bills either, so they all just sat out there, and the health department told the city that we had to go and pick that garbage up. But now the difference is, this is human feces, we cannot take that up to Jamestown and dump it in that building.
Okay.
You know, actual biohazard thing.
Okay, is that a leasing thing or a health thing? Who am I gonna look at here? Larry's Health? I don't know what that would be under.
Yeah, get them with me.
Well, find a number and start calling, I guess. Health issue to me there.
Well, when does that fall under, Larry, health?
I don't think that'd be a health issue, you know, biohazard kind of thing.
Tom, if you want to try and give me the number, maybe I will try to call, and then I'm gonna, if they don't answer me, I'm gonna give them the health stack. I'd be willing to do that.
And we gotta figure something out, because that can't keep going like that, no.
No.
And now you said, did we send them a letter? I know, was it a couple of weeks ago, you and I talked about letters and stuff going on?
No, well, I talked to Lauren about it a little bit. We should probably have a letter written up, what exactly our ordinance says, say, about the tall grass and the ordinance number, because that's just putting a flyer on the doors.
Yeah, they know, yeah, well, I didn't see it.
We gave them the two weeks notice, but yeah, I don't care either way we do it, but just so we... But that wasn't on their door mailed out?
No, not that I know of.
You guys didn't put it on their door?
No.
I did mail some out, because you called me and asked me, but I had told you guys, I left them right here for you to just take and take them to their doors, so when they come home, they see them, we're having such a time mailing stuff. I have this one alone, huh?
Did Sarah Lauren mail them?
No, it comes right back, non-deliverable, I get it right back. But nothing goes to her, I get all her water bills, everything. Right now, we haven't mailed our city bills out, Katie's been letting me just leave them there, the ones in town, for the last four months. Well, she has to go back to, they have to go to Fargo when they come back here. This is our first month that they went to Fargo and came back. As of tonight, when I answer the answer machine, I'm up to 21 people calling me to ask what their bill is, because they never received a bill. So to send these letters out, if you're going to have two weeks late, they should just be taped to the door.
Well, you can be bold, but at least we have recovered.
I did mail, I did mail them to the one, it's like you asked me to.
But that wasn't on there, that one wasn't?
No, she said the letter came back.
Sarah Wards, Sarah Wards, it's a waste to send her anything, because it comes back. She never opened up the post office up here, so any bill, city bill we've ever had, I put a stamp on it, I get it back, return to center. Any letter I've told, sent to her, it comes back, return to center.
I don't know what to do about that one then, we can't get in contact with anyone. And she's the one that's on the, like, ownership?
Yeah.
Well, if we're putting stuff on the door and mailing out, that's all we can do for two weeks? We gotta go mow it then, we did our due diligence. Or not, what's your guys' opinion?
There's goes right on the taxes, because they don't pay the bills or the taxes. So here, November 1st, anything that Sarah Wards, any grass moving, any water city bill, when the vendor comes through to Trish Lane, and it goes on to the taxes. Same with, I can't send anything to Terry from the Tastoff Post, I mean, Tasty Freeze, oh no. Nobody's got a phone number. I just now got an address, but she, I sent it to Trish for taxes, she does pay hers when Trish sends it to her, but Sarah Wards doesn't. So that whenever those houses go back, every last bill, every lawnmower, everything is on it, they have paid an eighty dollar deposit and that's it, since they've had their houses.
Well, mow it, keep putting it on there, and then we've had two people offered to buy the damn thing.
You know...
I don't know what else to say at this point, we can't not mow it, right?
People were offered to buy that house for a reasonable price, and if it comes up for taxes, we'd say, yeah, but there's still a year and a half on those.
Well, I mean, we just can't walk away from and not mow it and put it on taxes, okay?
Yeah, we can put it on the taxes in one way. I wonder if that flail mower, how much, is there junk, do you think, in that grass?
Oh, I think the mower, mow it, is just, being nobody's there, we put a flyer on the door, it's not, they're not gonna see it anyway.
I think we just mow it and help the fire.
You have to send them something by the league of cities, so we have to, I'll mail them, well, they come back to me.
You can mail it, and there's your proof you mailed, it'd be tiny, it's tiny.
Okay, because I start saving them. Because I did...
I guess, I don't know what else to do, we did both, I mean, we're going above and beyond, as far as I'm concerned.
We mail it, if it comes back, and you save it, and just go in and mail it.
Okay, I don't know what else to do on that one, besides...
Let it mow it?
Yeah. Put it on the door, mail it, and it comes back and it blows off, whatever, we did what we were supposed to.
Door's wide open, I'm just, like a airplane, I don't want to send it in the hole, and land in the ship, but...
Anything else, Bill?
Uh, that shouldn't be it.
All right. Auditor, what do you got?
I got a few things. We'll start with, the Attorney General has changed a lot of rules with gaming permits. I have a printout of it all, if anybody's interested in looking at it and seeing it, just so you know, so you're aware of the changes, because they are, they are doing things differently now. Then we have, we just talked about the unbuilt...
Oh, can you, sorry, do we wanna, is a lot changed, like we need more time to get these in?
Yeah, people need to start giving us a little bit more time.
Did you let the park board know, and like Danny's or the fire department thing?
I can, I will let them know.
We should send them a reminder, just to...
Yeah, I just called for Duck Fest one, I called them myself, because they have, they have a long sheet of paper, they have to turn in.
Yeah, that's what I mean, they got it in before a month or a meeting or whatever.
See, they would just go and shop them this weekend, and then he was gonna give it to me.
We're on Tuesday.
We're on Tuesday, because I did that paperwork right away, because if she kicks it out, we need time to play with it, but he knows what he's doing now, because last year it was kicked out two times, and before we got it exactly the way they wanted it.
Okay, I would just, the main people that's every year, let's send them some reminders.
Make sure they, like, if you go on raffles, you have 30-day raffle somewhere, you got to give 30 days, and now you can't just go make a raffle on your own sheet of paper. There's a, you have to go on their website, Attorney General's website, and print off one that has a seal from the Attorney General, give it a number, so they know it's given out, I suppose so they can account for these raffles, I don't know, but they're changing some of the rules.
Okay, well, at least let's make everyone aware of it, that's not just us here.
Okay, now then, with this, November 1st, I send in, I will be sending in all the street assessments, but I also send in, for anybody that has bills or whatever deal, I think you guys need to make a dollar amount that I use, okay, I just had, I got one 700 and something, I had one 500 and something, I've got... Those two just now paid, so I don't have to turn them in now. But like, all right, let's say, let's use Storbax for an example, he's not gonna catch up, his is 400 and something behind, he pays a hundred and fifty dollars a month. So give me a dollar, like, anybody that's over $300, I should send it to taxes. Anybody over $200, well, $200 could get you two months only that you're behind, but should, I mean, I would like to see that, should I, anybody over $300 send it? Guys giving almost three months that you're behind.
I don't think it should be that high, really.
Well, that's what I want you guys to tell me.
Because they know that bill is coming monthly, well, you know, for God's sake, what? Because I can remember when we were gonna have a policy, you know, nothing, no 30 days. Well, that went over and I don't know, it wasn't enforced and it went slip by the wayside. But it's always the same people, and they just push the envelope. That's why they, no more than 200.
No more, too?
You guys wanna give me a thing on that?
You guys, what do you guys think?
Well, if it's, if it's a history thing, you know, like, it's always, you know, like Lauren said, it's always the same people. But if you got somebody that doesn't have a history of ever being late for some odd reason, I don't think we should just throw them to the holes, you know? What do we got? Twelve month history, or what is that? Go over your history over the past twelve months to see how you've been doing or something like that? If you've never been behind for six mon, for, for twelve months, and you're two months behind, you know? Is there a problem, you know? I just don't wanna throw.
Something just came up?
You know, something came up, maybe he got sick, you know, something like, but if it's a repeat thing, yeah, of course.
Usually the people like that, they call me and let me know what's going on and we're, we do, you know? Like people, some people that go away to Arizona or somewhere else, they're away and they forgot to send the check. They'll call me and I'll say, because they have a history of paying all the time. I say, as soon as you get back, just make it pay. But there are some that are.
But for the ones that are repeat offenders, I, I agree.
We're not doing them any favors, so we'll put it that way.
The way, and I don't know if it's in writing, I thought it was, but I don't know where it would be, that the council had the discretion, under cases, to make exceptions. And what that was about was if it was a medical case or something,
Right.
that the council, before, would get sent away, the council could make an exception to it.
Well, we can put that in there, two hundred dollars or an exception with council's approval.
Yeah.
Is that what you guys want? Make a motion and we'll... Makes it easier on her, then she doesn't have to do it. It's up to you.
I'll make that motion, two hundred dollars and...
A second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next one is, um, our computer software. I, we're working under two thousand and twelve computers, our software in here. Um, there's a big stir in, in, with, with, uh, QuickBooks, that they are gonna make everybody by the end of September have to have up to date twenty twenty-four, blah, blah, blah. If you don't pay this five hundred dollars to do this, we're blacking out your computer. Well, this is what I was told. So I called our computer guy, Jamie, freaking out, kinda like, uh, do we need to get on the ball with this? Do I need to bring my computer or what? He said, no. He said, they're saying that, but that's not what they're doing. He said, he still has people using two thousand and three. So we're not as far behind as other people. He said, right now, they want you to go online and do the QuickBooks online for twenty twenty-four. They tell you it's gonna be five hundred dollars a year, and he has found that people he's done this for, then they come back three months later and they tell him it's a thousand dollars a year. Yeah. So he said, he doesn't recommend doing that. We could do to the two, twenty twenty-four desktop, if we wanted to. Or we could stay right where we're at. It's up to you guys. It would be five hundred dollars to move it to here, but we can always go forward, but we can't go backwards. Once we buy this, we can't go back to our two thousand and twelve if we don't like that, we have to pay that five hundred dollars a year. See, they're no longer letting you just go in, go in and buy them and you're done. They want to charge you every month for them. So, they haven't gone, he said, probably another three or four years, they might come back and say, okay, gotta have at least a desktop. But he says, we're good for right now.
Is there any big difference with the new to what you have?
That's what I asked him, and he said, not really, not a whole lot of it. Now, see, if I was doing Medlin payroll, I mean, if I was doing the payroll through this system, then I would have to get on that one online. But we, we do QuickBooks and then we use Medlin as payroll. So if I'll do the payroll, then I gotta turn around, after I do the payroll this time, I gotta turn around and do that same thing and put it over to QuickBooks. So I'm basically kinda doing payroll twice, taking it out of here and putting it over to QuickBooks. That only costs us eighty dollars a year to renew that every year.
I say just wait then if there's no difference.
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to make sure you guys, because I know I, before if I could change it, well, he told me right now, he says, it's not gonna give me much difference. But he will, like, next week, I hit on the phone with him, he'll get on my computer, he'll clean it up, make sure everything's good. You know, so, he does that once a year. But he doesn't, he said I wouldn't afford it, but I wouldn't do it if I was you.
I say leave it then.
Yeah. Okay. And the last thing, when you look at your, um, the bills, we're gonna look at the deposits. One of them deposits, we're missing six thousand two hundred and something dollars. Reason being is Patty at the bank had surgery, I was going in for surgery, I fit her pacemaker. So she took and ended her bank statements on the twenty-seventh. All my draft people get their money taken out of the account on the thirtieth or thirty-first, the last day of the month. So therefore, next month, you're gonna see that draft for this month, that should have been on this one, we'll see it on the next one. So if you look at that, we really have six thousand more and something dollars. But it just won't show up till next month.
Okay. So this month looked bad, next month looked good.
Well, this month looks bad because we paid for those, um, church and stuff to come in. Otherwise, we're right on, we're right, would be more than, our deposits would be more than our, depending what we're paying now. And then you have two different people, like, Logan County. Try counting, news really wouldn't matter because there isn't that much, but Logan County didn't put their check in for that month, so this month they're taking out two checks. Trying to think they deposited like the beginning of the month. So, but if you did, if you didn't have that church house and stuff, we'd be right on, right on mark. And then that is it. Oh, and John Murray did get two, um, tickets this month. One for twenty dollars and one for twenty-five dollars for his dog at large, and he gave something to him. So, are we, uh, when Kyle was here, he gave the twenty-five dollar ticket, and I said, well, maybe we should talk to Andrew. Do we have a sliding scale? Once you hit three of them, that goes up higher, or how do, how do we have that working?
I thought each fence was...
It went higher.
Higher, right? And a certain amount of dog was taken away, but... We should, you know, that's what I was under the assumption.
Well, I think Nyberg's, when they got rid of theirs, when they got their third one, that the city did, there was his, this one, there was this one around trying to bite me. And kill a deer. And I know it's old Kyle that's eating a hole in the fence in the backyard, but all your people down here are upset about this dog. He leaves the front door open and just lets the dog go out the door.
Well, we should double the, a cowl or something in the backyard, and all those papers, use some chicken wire, so it's not gonna heat that dog in.
Well, we better find that ordinance then. I would say double it, puke double it until we reach our limit then. Because there's enough of them running around town in Barker and everything. Okay. Uh, Grant, what do you got for us?
Oh, nothing currently.
Jeff High is gone. Larry, you got anything?
No.
Lauren?
Nope.
All right, old business, discuss budget and approve, we went through all that. Wage review. It said, oh, did you guys look into CDLs? Why do we think I just saw the wage review?
No, I haven't just.
We should, you guys wanna make sure you get that done before two, please? Um, see how long, how much it's gonna cost and how long it takes. Like, I know there's a few different ones that we've been looking into too, so. Okay, um, did you talk to Ann Zimmerman?
Yeah. I walked around her lawn. And I seen these, there was, they're about probably two inches in diameter. You know, I had a walk and it didn't look like dog dung. And finally, I kicked it and I picked it up. What I think it is, there's earthworms or night galls. Pushing this dirt up.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of those spots. The other thing, um, she said, these neighbor kids are coming over and spraying chemical on her flowers and killing them. I, I honestly think it's a case of dementia.
Absolutely.
And she left a message again, just, well, I was today at Jolene White's funeral, when I met with her. And just the other day, she left a message again. And they're, they're still killing her flowers. Those flowers that she pointed to, for one, I couldn't see no flowers. There was nothing. There was not even a stalk, you know, that was dried up. So I, I think she's, she's just failing.
I, I just can't see kids going down there and spraying chemicals on her flowers.
And I asked her if she's called the sheriff's department, and she has. Um, but she's, they don't do nothing. Well, really, what can they do?
Yeah, there's nothing actionable.
Yeah.
She'd have cameras there to see them doing.
I mean, I just, I don't think there's anything we can do. And I got a feeling, I mean, who knows how long she's gonna be there and how fast it's gonna deteriorate, her condition. And I know she don't get along with some of the family. So I don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, thanks for looking into it.
Yeah, I mean, she, she wasn't real aggressive that we gotta do something. But she said she's tired of it. But there is nothing.
She stopped us when we were doing the garbage on Thursday. No one walked around and couldn't find anything other than what you, same thing you saw.
Yeah. You know, it's just dirt. I didn't see any dill or, well, actually blaming something out on cats, that was the call. The cats are, are digging holes in our lawn. You know, they're, a cat usually don't, they're gonna go in the soft dirt.
I've never seen a cat tear up sign.
No.
No, they're, they're looking for sand and things, or all the soft stuff.
There's not a family member that person could talk to and let them know that she's...
I know, like Dale, Dale, also. She won't talk to him.
How about Scott Holstrom, her other son?
I don't think.
What about Angie?
One of them, she's back, and her husband painted the deck, but I'd have to ask Lindy which one that was.
I wonder if that was an Audrey's.
Is it? I, I don't know which one it was, but...
Maybe Angela, I can't say.
Yeah.
I know she does say, don't get along with Dale.
Well, we can find out. Raffle permit for fire department allegiance, building permit for a pine yard, Linda Wood. Uh, new business, billing permit for Linda Pressler House, remodel inside and out. Take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, gacko permit for Duck Fest. Motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I had city properties put on here. I had a phone call about a gentleman that his friend was looking at purchasing, possibly purchasing one of the, it'd be right over here, the old Catholic church that you guys just tore down. And, uh, they're trying to level out and stuff, but kinda wondering if we're selling them, what kind of prices we're looking at, what kinda, if we'd be looking at doing some kinda deal for someone to potentially buy it. So I said I would should bring it up to you guys. I don't know if it's something the city wants to not sit on so many properties. The nice thing is, we have nothing on there, no structures, so anything that's gonna be built or put on there has to be approved by the council. So we have that laid up on someone just coming in and getting a good deal on a property and we're back to square one, so we can control that. But I don't know if that's anything you guys are thinking about or in favor of. Just trying to get you guys' thoughts or give you a heads up.
We have to have something because we have no zoning laws down there, so who knows what they could build?
Nothing, as long as we don't prove it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. We have to, we have to have some kinda CSO on there.
Which we do, yeah.
Yeah.
And that one, like that specific property, there's twenty-eight hundred dollars left on assessments. And I know we got quite a bit of money into the tear down of the church and everything, but I don't know, do you guys looking at?
How much property is actually there? Is it, is it two lots? It's not a full lot, though, is it?
It's the west, what, I'm gonna say forty feet? Oh, I think.
It's gotta be one, only one lot because their main thing was three thousand and something dollars in the beginning, for the old church house down there.
Yeah, it's the west forty feet of lots ten, eleven, and twelve, I think. Three lots. See, lots run east and west.
Right.
So Maryland's got the east hundred feet of those three lots. And the church had the west, I think it was forty feet.
Okay.
That's the part that kinda scares me about that property. It's pretty hard to put a building on there because you're right up against all the other, you know, any size at all.
Right, yeah. That's what I mean. What are they planning on putting there? You only got forty feet, what are you gonna?
Well, maybe I should, is it, are you guys at least willing to?
You know, my opinion on...
Prove some of the money back for it and sell it? At least, I mean, are you at least leaning towards selling any of them?
My opinion, like, I had that call from that guy from that property down, I hadn't talked to him since the last meeting. Down there, the Kinzler, I call it, Kinzler House.
Yep.
In my opinion, if he's gonna put a house on there, we're gonna gain, we could damn near give it to him. Or even this church lot, give it to him. And then, when they put a building on there, at least we get some tax revenue back.
We'd have to recoup whatever street assessments where the city was paying.
Yeah, and they'd have to take over the street assessment.
They'd take it over, but we've already paid three years of assessments.
Well, that's the trouble, if we wanna go back and recapture everything that we've invested.
Yeah.
They're gonna walk away and say, have all of it.
So we would be, and maybe what I can do, and I can call them and talk to them and see if they just wanna, we could even call them on the phone for a meeting or show up at a meeting, just kinda say, this is what the plans are. We could tell them there's twenty-eight hundred and eighty-three dollars of assessments left, that that would have to go on. Not forgiving them because we got so many thousands of dollars into that property, tearing it down, re-leveling it, getting it to code. Okay, I can should do that. At least we have a starting point, I guess.
Drew, has this guy seen that property? Well, he must think it's big enough to build whatever he wants.
That's what I'm thinking, maybe just a small hunter, or hunter shack or something, I don't know.
So those little move-in, you know?
One of them little cabin things, yeah. That'd be all they can put on there, the little cabin thing.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, yeah. Okay, at least we got a starting point then, and I can let them know that then, so. And I guess that would be kinda the same thing for any of the other properties that we've, moving forward, so I can let them know, just probably come to a council meeting and try and work something out with us and...
And I was gonna ask, uh, Isaac, if we can just sell that property for a dollar? Or do we have to put it up for bids? Being a city owned.
You'd have to put it up for bids.
I don't know, because I'm thinking Hazelton was doing it for quite a few years.
We had to put that property down there up for bids, remember I called in it? We have to, because it's a city entity, we have to put it up for bids for, hope anybody else should.
And where was it? I just read something about development, where cities were given land for development. That's why I'm not so sure.
We could get around that. Because we're trying to develop the city, which I think is a great idea. Okay. All right, no, that answers that. We can move on. All right, no, that answers that. We can move on from that then. Uh, we discussed Renee Clark and if she's got any questions, I hope she can come into a meeting and we can tell her we're trying to work with it and what's happened in the past and what we plan on doing in the future for her.
I think the first thing, let's go down to the transit and find out what kind of grades we're dealing with.
We should be able to go back to that study sheet. They gave us copies, even if not, Moore's got them on hand.
Yeah, I don't know how much, you know, segments as far as.
I know we filed that, goddamn, do you have any idea where we did?
I'll have to look at it. It's probably right over here.
Okay, but I, it might help you out because I know that had all the landscape elevations, everything on it. It's just like twenty pages or something, I remember it, but I know we filed it. But that would definitely help them, like you said. It was probably easier to just go down to the transit, I guess. Uh, Nyberg, no fence.
That's, that's the one that I did, I was trying to do this first in that fellows, okay? The one that lives right behind Celestia's old house, Celestia Corey's house. The old fellows that moved in here.
The one that they blocked access and put up the fence, yeah.
Yeah, um, I did run into him and I told him he needed a permit for the fencing. And I told him, like, what he's got there wouldn't, he needs to give us exactly what materials and everything he's gonna use for the fencing. And that one wasn't good enough and I said, we all approved those. So, he's, he still hasn't taken it down, so I don't know if we need to, I don't know, he has to take that wire, chicken wire down or cause you did not approve the permit for, for that.
His old permit is, is expired now too, so.
Yeah.
That was just work on his basement, wasn't it?
Yeah, now his cinder blocks are flower planters now, so.
Well, I guess. So, we can move forward on this and not waste a bunch of time. I guess we can either ask him to come to a council meeting so we can all sit together and address this, or if not, he's gotta remove everything.
Yeah.
Can't just have, if we let this go, then everyone's gonna be doing it, so. That's my opinion, but you guys say whatever.
That's what I said, they should come to the next, like, we should have jumped them.
Well, you had it up then.
Well, yeah, since young, yeah. And we should have brought it up when we didn't. I mean, there's a hindsight, but.
So, what, you guys just wanna send a letter? Is that gonna get there?
I'll just go over there. For him to come next once he.
So, they got till October seventh to either remove everything or come to a meeting and explain what we're.
Okay.
I don't think we're too hard. Maybe, I guess, I don't know. Okay, we had talked about Ardell's position for for that. I don't know, is that, can you ask Ardell then? I guess I don't see it.
Well, no, why don't I look? I can't remember what year it was that we were dealing with that.
But you see, you, you got him there, but did he, is he still doing it or did he give him, when he quit, did he, when he retired, I should say, just didn't quit, he retired? Did he retire from that position? So, you'll have to ask him then.
Yeah, and I don't know if we have to renew it annually or, you know? But I'll ask Ardell.
And we got that figured out. We're gonna try and help, well, not help you out, but try and address that situation too as a council. Maybe we can get somewhere. Um, come rate study that, we went across. No one's got any other questions on that. If you do, I can sure give you topical ideas. He can explain it a lot better than me. I'm not an engineer, so we're gonna go with that shit. Uh, everyone, we look back at the bills. Is any questions on bills from last month? Is Paul Hammers just on a salary type deal or is that for?
Who?
Paul Hammers.
Yeah, he gets that each month. He's salary. That's why he called me, said, lunch, I usually like, from town.
Any questions or anything on there, guys? We should now take a motion to approve them.
Move to approve the bills.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, October seventh, does that work for, for everybody at this time?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay, at seven P M? All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.